This meeting will now be called to order. This is the regular meeting of the City of Southfield being held on Monday, January 31st at 6:00 PM. Would you please stand for the -- I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks, present.
Brightwell?
Here.
Cruz?
Present.
Frazier?
Here.
Hoskins?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Present.
Taylor?
Here.
Madam President, you do have a quorum. Thank you. Now, would we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Counsel, we have two sets of minutes to be approved this evening.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes of January 10th, 2022, and the regular meeting minutes of January 27th, 2022.
Support?
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Frazier, for the approval of our regular minutes, meeting minutes of January 10th, 2022, and our regular meeting minutes of January 27th, 2022. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have up. Thank you. Next, we are going into our public hearing. And we have five tonight. Our first public hearing is PSLU 21-0009, a special use request of Eagle Alliance LLC.
Good evening. As you stated, our first public hearing is PSLU 21-0009, located at 28595 Northwestern Highway. Existing zone is B1 neighborhood business, and the special land use request is to allow the tenant to be used as a restaurant with a bar. This is the site aerial of an -- it's an existing shopping center. They're backfilling the former Coney Island, showing here on the right of the screen. The future land use plan and the zoning does permit restaurants with bars. These are the details of the floor plan. And with that, Madam Chair, I don't know if the applicant is here, would like to say a few words. Then we'll open the public hearing. Once the public hearing's closed, then you can address counsel's questions. Thank you.
Good evening. Yes, my name is Ron Mims. I'm one of the principals of the restaurant that we're proposing on bringing up to Southfield. It's a Memphis-based franchise that specializes in daiquiris and wings and seafood, and we'll be bringing that up. We'll be like one of the first locations outside of Memphis as far as a franchise. And they're also going to cities such as Atlanta, Chicago, DC, and Florida. So we'll be the first ones in the Midwest, in the Detroit area, and we wanted to make that place Southfield as our first place. And we're looking forward to bringing that up here in this location.
Thank you.
With that, Madam Chair, please open the public hearing.
This is a public hearing, so I now declare the public hearing open for PSLU 21-0009. If there is anyone in the audience that would care to speak to this topic, please come forward. Okay. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. I'll go to counsel. And I'll start with you, Mr. Mandelbaum.
No, I have no questions. I think this is an exciting opportunity to bring to Southfield something different and unique, and I'm sure it's going to be a big draw. So I'm excited. I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hoskins?
I'll echo what Councilman Mandelbaum said. I'm really excited about this. I'm glad you are coming back to the city. I'm looking forward to this new venture, and I'm hoping -- I can't wait to come visit. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Frazier?
Yeah. What are your hours of operation?
It's going to be 11 to 2:00 AM, 11:00 in the afternoon or in the morning.
From 11:00 to 2:00 AM?
Yes.
11:00 in the morning to 2:00 in the morning?
Correct.
How many days a week?
We probably won't go those hours every day, but we'll have the market determine on those hours. But most likely, on the weekends, we'll go to those later hours. And during the week, we will not go until 2:00 in the morning, like on a Monday or Tuesday. So we'll be shutting down early.
Okay. The other thing, and it's just something that seems to pop up until the new people get their hands around the problem, and that is, a restaurant opens up, and it's a very popular place, and it brings a crowd, and sometimes the crowd gets a little unruly, and we have police calls. You're going to have security at the restaurant?
Correct, correct. And also, I'm going to coordinate with Mr. Spence, and he's going to put me in --
Perme?
I'm going to coordinate with Mr. Spence. He's going to put me in contact with the Southfield Police Department, and we'll kind of coordinate any kind of help we will need in terms of securing the area, as well as our own security.
Okay.
If I could, Mr. Frazier, one of the requirements is to meet with our community policing department to go over their operations and safety protocols.
Okay. And I know this is standard procedure, but somehow or another, the customers didn't get to go to that -- they didn't get an invitation to that meeting. But we have to make sure that you're successful.
Sure.
So one way to be successful is to make sure that the people that aren't interested in, folks that are pretty cranky?
Sure.
Are taken care of right away so they can enjoy themselves.
Exactly, exactly. And we all know that it's also how you market yourself and how you present the actual product once we open up. So we'll be mindful of that. And the one benefit is we're not the only game in town, where it used to be maybe one or two places. I mean, now Southfield has at least five or six places that seem to all share a nice, decent amount of crowds. So now that we're not the only game in town, we'll, you know, just add to the entertainment, you know, of Southfield.
Are you going to have entertainment?
No, we're not going to have like live entertainment.
Music? Background music?
Background music, for sure.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Madam President, I don't have anything. I think this is a great opportunity for the city, so thanks for bringing it here first.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
I think we walked through this the last time you were here. It's a very good project. I think it's going to be very successful here in the City of Southfield, and I'm 100% supportive of it, and thanks for the presentation and thanks for your candor. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
I agree with my colleagues. Wish you best wishes and looking forward to the grand opening.
Oh, good. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We wish you all the best.
Madam Chair, we have a recommended resolution in your packet. It's being displayed on the screen above.
So counsel?
Are you looking for a motion?
Yes.
Yes. I would like to recommend that PSLU 21-009, special use request of Eagle Alliance LLC, to allow for a restaurant with a bar to be located at 28595 Northwestern Highway be approved.
Support?
It's been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilman Cruz, for the approval of the special land use request, PSLU 21-0009, for Eagle Alliance LLC. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you and welcome.
All right. Thank you.
Welcome and good luck.
Next, we have another public hearing for PSLU 21-0010, another special use request, this time for Taste of Ethiopia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, again, this is a similar situation. However, this particular site located at 28639 is a current restaurant. They do have a liquor license to serve to tables, but they do want to add an official bar area. That's what's triggering the special land use. They're also expanding into vacant tenant space adjacent to them, so they're enlarging their business. This is an existing B1 neighborhood business, special land use request to allow the tenant to be used as a restaurant with a bar. This is the site aerial. The Taste of Ethiopia is located there on the left of your screen, in the existing shopping center, and they'll be expanding into that green canopy space to the right. It is consistent with the zoning and future land use plan. The area shaded in gray is the expanded area of their floor plan. And with that, if you'd like to make a few comments about what's being proposed, and then we'll open the public hearing and then can come back to answer questions. Thank you.
Sure. Good evening. I am the architect for the project. I just want to clarify, it's actually the reverse. The gray area is where they operate currently, and the owner had the opportunity to take over the space to the left there. Excuse me. Just, it was, it came up available, she saw it as an opportunity to expand her business. Also, it had, it used to be a hookah lounge, so they had kind of a bar area already. She has been operating with a liquor license for, I think, 10 years, already has a bit of a cocktail menu, but they currently have to mix the drinks and everything in the kitchen. It's not super convenient. So that was another sort of bonus to this expansion, was to give her a proper bar, just to, just to have the space, the breathing room, to make the drinks. It's not intended to be a nightclub. The operations aren't really changing. I believe the hours are 12 to 12. But she just wanted more breathing room and an opportunity to expand.
Okay. Thank you very much. Did you give us your name and address for the record?
Sure. Danielle Catteray, 2428 Galpin Avenue, Royal Oak, Michigan, 48073.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. You can have a seat for a moment. Yes, thank you. This is a public hearing for PSLU 21-0010. I now declare the public hearing open, and if there's anyone here that would care to speak to this topic, please come forward. Seeing none, I will now declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, is there anyone with any questions? Seeing none. Would you have your recommendation?
Madam Chair, the recommendation with conditions was included in your packet. I will iterate that the hours of operation shall be limited to noon through 12:00 midnight Monday through Saturday, as requested by the applicant. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the counsel may have.
Thank you. Counsel.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve PSLU 21-0010 with the recommended resolution by the city planner.
Support?
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Brightwell, for the approval of PSLU 21-0010, the special use request of Taste of Ethiopia. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I'm sorry, Mayor, did you have a comment? Were you going to make a comment?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you. Good luck.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah. Mr. Crowe, did we have that recommendation last week, or is it new, the info that you have on the screen?
This is, we typically include the recommendations in your packet and on the slides.
Okay. Is it in, so it is here?
It should be in your packets.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. And this was to expedite having to read through all the recommendations. That was the direction counsel wanted to do a while ago, but I'd be happy to read the entire thing if you'd --
No, no, that's fine. I just --
If you'd like.
No. You know, I had to read it. I was just wondering where it was. I'm having difficulty pulling the package, and I only got a limited --
Sure.
But that's okay. I work with IT with that. That's fine.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have PSP 21-0009, which is a site plan review, request for Habitat for Humanity Oakland.
Yes, Madam Chair. Actually, our public hearings have concluded. The next three items are just site plan approvals.
Thank you.
So we have, as you stated, PSP 21-0009, located at 20436 Westland Drive on the north side of Westland, between west of Evergreen Road. Existing zoning is RT attached single family, and the proposal is to construct 2,388 gross square feet duplex. The existing site is vacant. The site plan shows the duplex in relationships to the properties to the right and left. This is the example of a typical landscape plan around one of the units, and this is the proposed rendering of the duplex, elevations, and floor plan. So with that, I turn it over to the developers, if you want to add anything. If the counsel may recall, about a year or so ago, we did rezone from single family to the RT six unit, six properties, to encourage infill development in this neighborhood. So with that, you give your name and contact information, and then you can talk about your project.
Good evening. I'm Scott Milliken, Director of Operations for Habitat for Humanity Oakland County, 150 Osmond, Pontiac, Michigan. We're very eager to begin this project in the spring and bring a new product line to our existing efforts in the community. This will be number 99 in 100 for homeownership projects since 2016 in the City of Southfield. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, do we have any questions or comments? Councilman Frazier?
Yeah. Typically, when, or in history, when Habitat for Humanity builds a house, the candidate, the person that's going to be living in the house has to provide sweat equity in order to offset their down payment and all. Is this true in this situation or not?
Yes. Our homeownership program has a sweat equity component of 300 hours of sweat equity for our homeownership.
Could you speak a little louder, please?
We do have a homeownership component to our program, I'm sorry, a sweat equity component to our homeownership program. It's 300 hours per unit that is sold. Also, they do save their down payment in addition to that with matching grant funds coming from several different sources for affordability purposes.
Okay. And how do you select the candidates?
We have an open application that's on our website, and they go through the process through our partner, Community Department, which follows fair housing selection and basically the willingness to partner and to follow the guidelines of the program, including the sweat equity and the down payment assistance and the ability to pay. It is third-party mortgage in the end. They pay appraised value for the units, just as you and I would. It's just a specialized product from the mortgage provider that is available to them because they're in the Habitat program. So it's not a typical mortgage product that someone coming off the street could get as far as having down payment assistance channels and also the support throughout the entire time that they own the home from the Habitat Agency.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah. Are there, you might have mentioned this, are there any longevity restrictions with respect to how long they have to be in the property?
Depending on down payment assistance channels, there are timelines that are associated with that down payment assistance channel. Typically, that's a five-year term. And if they were having a life change prior to that five-year point, to where they would need to sell their property, then they would forfeit that down payment assistance upon sale. They would have to pay that back. But that's the financial requirement, if you will, that ties them to the property for a period of time.
Okay. What is your, your record with respect to turnover in that particular case, when people have a life-changing incident, they have to, they have to go through this extreme procedure?
Sure. I've been with the organization for 10 years, and we've seen it happen one time in the 10 years I've been there, to give you an idea. It's very low.
Thank you.
Okay.
Seeing no other question?
Just one more.
I'm sorry.
Just for the audience, I know we talked about this at the last meeting, but your, the cost to build these homes, you're actually going to be taking a loss building these homes for the Habitat clients. Is that correct?
That's correct. We're looking at about $100,000 loss on the total structure, so about $50,000 loss per side. Again, as mentioned before, some of that, probably, I would say, probably about $7,000 per side, is investment that we're making into an all-electric structure. So there won't be any gas going to this structure whatsoever, and it will be all-electric, and therefore providing a lower monthly utility bill to the homeowners of each side.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. No other questions or comments? Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just do want to point out, in this particular case, there are five waivers that will be required, so your approval will be conditioned upon them receiving the waivers from the Zoning Board of Appeals. There's a four-foot waiver on each side, east and west, because these duplex units are a little larger. There's a 20-foot waiver for the shed, so they're constructing a shed in the rear yard for additional storage. And then there's a slight waiver on the minimum unit size, but we're in favor of supporting these waivers. I just wanted to point that out to the counsel before you make your final motion.
Thank you. Counsel, are you ready to make a motion?
Yep. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve PSP 21-0009, the site plan review request of Habitat for Humanity to construct a 23, 2,388 square foot residential duplex.
Support?
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Cruz, for the approval of the site plan review request, PSP 21-0009, as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any, anyone opposed? Seeing none? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next site plan review is PSP 21-0010 for the City of Southfield Parks and Recs Department for renovations to Miller Park.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And joining us tonight is Ms. Fields, Park and Rec Director, but I'll do a brief introduction, and then she can add a few words. There are actually two parks, Miller Park and Sims Park. We'll take each one individually. PSP 21-0010 is the improvements to Miller Park, the petitioner's OHM, on behalf of the City of Southfield. And the site plan review request is for alterations to the park, including a new pickleball, basketball courts, and asphalt trail around the existing ball field. This is existing conditions from the aerial. These are the demolition plans. This is the reconfiguration of the tennis courts with the pickleball to the right and three basketball courts, half courts to the left, and some improvements at the entranceway at the parking lot. And then a walkable pedestrian pathway around the ball fields will be installed, all of which came out of the master plan process. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Fields, if she would like to add anything to this project and your overall plans.
Sure. Thank you, Planner Crowe. Good evening, counsel. As you know, the priority and importance of providing outdoor spaces for our residents is paramount right now. Investing and improving in those spaces continues to be a priority for our city. We have, these improvements at Miller and Sims Park continue to be a request, not only of the master plan that is current, but also within our master plan process that we just have gone through with our community engagement. I can share with you just a couple of pieces of feedback that we did receive from residents on Miller Park quickly. We did have a request, excuse me, for clear sightlines into the park. We had a request to make sure that we had parking ballards at the head of the trailhead so that we didn't have any cars sneaking onto that path. We had questions in regards to the distance from the walking path, that is about a third of a mile, what the distance was between the path and the residential fencing along the park, and it's 90 feet. We also had some questions from Planning Commission about some fencing in between the two play activities, the pickleball and the basketball area. And we also want, we had several calls, making sure that we weren't putting up a pavilion, a shelter rental in Miller Park that was going to bring in a lot of people at one time. We're looking forward to the pickleball. We've got quite a large contingency on the City of Southfield of pickleball players. It'll allow us not only to provide that amenity, but also be able to teach, be able to offer classes, have some tournaments hosted out there. So we're looking forward to these improvements, and I can answer any questions. And I'm joined by Chris Riggert from OHM, who's here tonight, too, who might be able to answer any questions that you might have that I can't.
Thank you. Thank you. Counsel, does anyone have any questions or comments? Councilman Mandelbaum?
Thank you, Ms. Fields. The parking lot will be resurfaced as well?
We are not resurfacing the parking lot, but what we're doing, Councilman Mandelbaum, is we're changing the entrance a little bit. As you come into the entrance, and when I say change the entrance, the welcome signs, the signs that meet our residents as they pull into the park. When you pull into the park, you'll be looking straight at the trailhead. So what we're doing is rearranging some of the parking areas. We won't have any parking at the, at the start of the trailhead. It will be handicap parking to the right. So we are changing the layout as far as parking goes, and we're also addressing the entrance with our signage. These two parks, both Miller and Sims Park, are getting rebranding, if you will. I know that you've seen our logo, and that has changed and been updated. We have not addressed signage and wayfinding in our parks for a very long time. So as folks come into the park, we're ensuring that they're comfortable and they know where to go, where to walk, and making sure that as they come out of their vehicles and come off the trailhead, that there's no blind spots and it's safe.
If I could add a point of clarification, during the Planning Commission hearings, we did hear from at least one resident that was concerned about some of the donuts that people were doing in the parking lot. And to address that issue, we talked about adding parking blocks at the head of the stalls so that the parking lot's not wide open. That should help to rectify, maybe not everything, but help to start to address that issue.
Okay. But you don't feel the parking lot was in too bad of a shape?
No. Uh-uh.
Okay. Perfect. Hopefully, maybe just a little restripping after all the --
Absolutely.
But that's probably all it needs. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Could you --
Thank you. Um, could you go back, oh, there it is, the picture, the three basketball courts. Is there enough room between the courts if you have, like, a really, um, a girl, like, aggressive group do playing a three-on-three or?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, because it looks awfully close to me. And I just would hate to see, example, the top basketball court and the bottom basketball court, someone trying to make that a full court, and then the person in the, the side court. I mean, I don't know how far that is.
Yeah.
But I can just, I know with my family, they'd probably try to take that top and bottom and make it one full court and that one on the side. But maybe it's a lot larger than what it appears.
Sure. The, I, I think the perspective is that it might look a little bit tight. The reason why we made those half courts or for the example that you just gave, um, a lot of times at some of the basketball courts, when you just offer the full court, um, and we don't split them into half-court area, play area, we've got some folks that might monopolize. And so we don't have the smaller kids that want to come in and play, the dads and sons that want to play three-on-three, as you had said, um, in a half-court area. Um, that's why we specifically put three half courts. Now, if there's no one playing on a, on that, on that third court there, and there's only a group of people that want to use a full court, they certainly can. Um, but what we wanted to do is to provide options and the availability of being able to house more than one group playing basketball.
So what is the distance between that court on the left versus the court on the top and the bottom?
I don't have it on me.
Doesn't seem like a lot of room.
Chris, do you know the distance?
I, I don't know the distance. Are you referring to the, the baseline from the bottom to the fence, or?
Well, I, not
Yeah.
I guess, yeah, I guess from the fence to where they would throw, you know, where the line is. Where they would be playing, because they're going to go outside of that circle.
Right, yes, I believe.
If you're a true ball player, if they're little kids, that's one thing, but you get some teenagers there. I mean, I, I just, it just looks awfully close, or that one on the left side.
But, yes, uh, I don't have the dimensions offhand, but we did use best practices and, and standards when laying these out. Some of the aspects of the courts aren't standard, obviously, because you can see some of them are overlaid, so they're not, um, you know, the, the, the half court follows the, the standards for, uh, for a half court and has the paint, but in terms of the baseline, and I believe there is at least a six-foot, uh, distance between the fence and the baseline of the, of the basketball court, which would be the, the requirement for a basketball.
What is that, what is that circle in the middle?
Um, that would be the, the, the center circle between the two, if someone were playing a full-court basketball game. Which, like Ms. Fields said, you know, uh, if, if it's a crowded day, there's potentially three different parties playing on three different basketball hoops. Uh, if there was one party, they would potentially, they'd have the option of playing a full game, full court game.
Who's going to control the crowd? As a, I mean, I, I'm not really that familiar with that, um, park. Are there a lot of, like, teenagers that play there or frequent that area?
We, we hope so. There hasn't been for a long time, but we have gotten a lot of requests for basketball, um, playing there. So, um, as far as, i- if you're asking, are we going to have someone staffed out there to do that, the answer would be no.
Yeah.
Um, are we going to have programs and programming happening out there? Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilman Fraser?
Yeah, uh, does this park close at dusk?
Yes.
Uh, how do you keep the kids from playing basketball, because they're going to play until it's not dusk, but almost dark?
Sure, sure. We're, we're partnering, as we always do, with all of our parks with the police department, so there'll be some monitoring done by our parks department and by the police department, uh, as well. Um, and hopefully, moving forward, um, we have a lot of residents who have been giving us a call too, um, glad to see the activity, uh, wanting to make sure that they felt, uh, both a police and safety and a parks presence in our parks. Um, so I hope that answered your question. We, we won't have someone out there monitoring it all the time, um, certainly. But as with any new amenity or any new structure, we certainly will be paying a lot of attention, uh, as we launch this park going forward.
Okay, because it seems to me that, in this conversation, you had mentioned that, uh, there hasn't been an awful lot of activity out there now, but with the improvements, you hope that there are, uh, there's a lot more activities.
Absolutely. In, in a mix, um, we're, we're having pickleball there, we have basketball there, and we're having a walking trail. Um, it's been primarily, as Chris, um, talked about earlier, it's been primarily some folks, um, after hours or even during hours, um, with their cars, and a lot of activity in the parking lot. So we're really hoping, as we bring in not only, um, youth and younger people, but we're bringing in adults wa- walking on the walking path, and we're bringing in, uh, adults playing on those pickleball courts. So sometimes more activity provides a level of safety as well. It's not just one group thinking that no one's even paying attention to them. And as we go forward too, um, baseball is coming back, so we've got those ball diamonds out there as well.
Okay, um, I know it's not part of this thing, but, uh, and maybe you can answer it, maybe Fred will have to answer it. Uh, I know a number of years ago, we used to have some problems with, uh, activities that we didn't approve, unapproved activities at some of the parks, and we put some cameras out there. Are those cameras still out there, or are we taking them out, or?
They, we've had, uh, cameras, prior to me, we've had cameras, uh, in a couple of our parks, but, um, the updates weren't current on those, um, and cameras are a part of our safety plan going forward. Um, not just in those two parks, but we're addressing it, um, park-wide, uh, as we go forward, especially with these improvements. Uh, I did receive that question from one of our residents that had requested, uh, to give some thought to providing some cameras. Um, and it's, it's not just as, it's a great, uh, comment, and I'm glad you brought it up. Uh, it's not as easy as just putting a camera in place, it's who monitors it, who views it, who has access to it. So we're working that out and have had conversations with our police department in that, in that vein.
Okay.
So that, that's, that will be our step going forward, because providing these parks is one thing, keeping them safe, that's paramount.
Yeah, because, boy, watching the news, you never know what's going to happen.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah, uh, the, the prior question about scale, I, I know this thing is not drawn to scale primarily, but you mentioned that we're using best practices with respect to, uh, scaling, uh...
Excuse me, excuse me. Councilman Brightwell, would you pull your microphone closer to you?
Sure.
We're having a hard time hearing you.
Okay. With respect to scaling, and you indicated you use best practices. Um, I want to make sure that, uh, we're not causing conflicts or fights if this were crowded. We've got all three courts going on at the same time. And I know that, uh, but I, I play basketball and people just running all over the place, and so you can, you're constantly, if there's crowd and it's not... Do you feel comfortable that these three courts at this particular stage would not cause conflicts in when, when you get all three of them active?
Well, I can't say that there won't ever be a conflict, but I think that there is plenty of room here for, for three different parties to be able to play, uh, play on the hoops without, without any issues of, uh, disturbing each other.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm concerned by the conflict of crowding. Uh, but if they're made to scale, I mean, if the, the playgrounds are made to scale for that type of activity, it should be a minimal amount of, uh, induced, uh, fights or whatever, but, you know, people are going to do what they're going to do, but this is not built to encourage, uh, physical contact.
Correct. This is, this is not built to induce, uh, conflict. It's, it's meant to mitigate conflict. Uh, so there's plenty of room for, for the three parties to play. And then additionally, one of the things we've spoken with this body about is the fencing that divides even the, the basketball from the pickleball, uh, and raising that from a four-foot height to a six-foot, six-foot height fence or eight-foot height fence, so that even then, you know, the balls aren't flying over into the pickleball area, so there's, you know, no conflict between, between all parties. But, I mean, it is a flexible use space. As you can see, it could be used for a full-court game, it could be used for three, three, uh, individual half-court games. So there will need to be, um, you know, i- it's flexible and, and people will need to be able to work together, but in terms of playing three different half-court games, there's plenty of space there.
Okay. Um, Mrs. Fields, I'm assuming that when this is up and running, you will be, uh, we will be observing what is going on, you know, for a period of time, because for, so it normalizes the activity.
Yeah, absolutely. And, uh, you know, our, our folks, our parks crew are out in our parks all the time. They're not staying in one park. Um, but we certainly have, uh, have the ability to monitor as we continually do now, uh, even when parks don't have necessarily amenities, but they're still trash to empty and there's still things to, to attend to as far as our maintenance goes, whether it's our parking lot or, um, any issues there, any safety issues. So we do have a constant monitoring right now anyway, uh, but certainly as we go forward and plan and invest in these parks, we want to be able to manage them as well.
Okay, okay, it's fine. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Yes, um, I, I too, when, uh, Councilwoman Banks brought it up, when I first saw this, I said, there's no way that works, in my mind. And, uh, Ms. Fields, you know that I've, ever since you've gotten here, I've been begging for basketball, uh, everywhere. And I'm sorry that I don't even, I've never even heard of pickleball, so I don't know what that even is. Uh, and so, you know, when I saw that, what I was thinking was like, why don't, why don't we just have two full-court, uh, basketball courts? And, uh, you know, I mean, but you know better the appetite of pickleball. You said there's a lot of people in the city that
Absolutely.
that wanted that too, and I don't want to take that away from our residents either. But, um, I really don't think that, that design just doesn't work for me. Uh, there's no way that that last court over there and, uh, in the middle, um, is, is really going to work. There's not enough room. And I mean, I mean, I played basketball my whole life. I already know. It's, it's going to be very difficult, uh, for, I think, that, that design to work. And like I said, maybe, uh, I don't know, you know, maybe it just looks smaller on this picture, but, um, I really would like to just think a little bit more about that one. And, uh, I know you said the standards are up to par and all that kind of thing, so, um, so I want to say yay and thanks for, for moving this forward. A- absolutely. I'm just, um, I just don't quite care for the design myself personally, so. And at this point, that's all I would have to have to say right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Is there?
Yep, you can shut down.
Is there by any chance a way we could eliminate that middle court or, or put the middle court on pause? Um, and just develop the top and the bottom court and just see how it works? And if there's a need for a third court, because, um, one of my colleagues also mentioned, you know, those that are coming to watch the game. Um, you know, they're
Can you talk about that?
But if we eliminate that middle court just on a temporary basis to see how the flow works, we'll at least have two courts there, which I believe will work, but I, I think it's that middle court on the left side that...
We, um, uh, Ms. Fields and I just had a, a quick sidebar, and one of the things we had talked about is that the reason that the, um, courts are a little closer together is because we did include that center circle to be able to have the option for a full-court game. But when we went into the design, one of the, uh, directions was, you know, to make sure that we do have three half courts, uh, because it's the, uh, specifically as it pertains to noise and, uh, negative impact on the neighbors, some of the full-court games can get a little, a little louder than, say, a, a half-court game. So one of the solutions we had talked about is if we were to eliminate the striping that connects the two as a full court, pull those apart a little bit more, then you'd have more room for your middle court, um, which could pull away from the fencing line a little bit longer, and you'd have a little more elbow room for each of the three courts. But I think, uh, at least from the initial project conception, the thought was that the three courts would help control the level of, um, noise and disruption than if it were of a full court.
And what Chris is saying too is that we can make some change to that, so we can pull that out a little bit. On the side there, you see that it's kind of like a half moon. That's actually, um, hardscape so that people can come up and watch. Um, it goes over to the side of the hill a little bit, so we wanted players to be able to put their sweatshirts down there, do whatever they needed to do. Um, when we have one full court by itself, so they don't look at it as two, folks don't look at it as two half-court playing areas. So some older kids come in and monopolize that space, and smaller kids, mom and dad, uh, those kinds of games are eliminated by having it just one full-court basketball. So I understand that you, your concern is that it's, that it's tight. Uh, but what we really want to do is be able to bring some basketball into the community, um, kind of, uh, pace itself as, as far as what, what kind of court we're providing, um, and give ourselves options. When we put one full-court basketball court out there, it doesn't give folks a lot of options to share the space.
I don't know if I'm making, I don't know if I'm referring to one full court. I'm suggesting two half courts, and I would try to sell it as two half courts. Um, but if you're going to have, example, teenagers playing a full court and then little ones on the side court, I wouldn't let my little ones there. They're going to be run over by the, the guys, or the gals, or whatever, the older kids. I, but, you know, and it's just hard right now because we don't know what the distance is between the side court and the upper and the lower court. I mean, to me, it looks tight. You said it's not tight. What's the distance? Is it from here to, um, Councilman Brightwell? I mean, what's, what is the distance?
I, I don't have that, I don't have that distance for you.
It is, it is something we can continue to look at.
Sure, sure.
I think I'd like that information before, um, I'm ready to even vote on this. I, I'm not comfortable with this plan right now. At least with the basketball. Everything else I'm fine with. It's just that, that third court I'm not comfortable with. I just see more problems. And I'd rather have a successful basketball area versus one that could cause problems down the road.
Madam President?
Yes.
Could have, is there, um, because again, like Nancy said, or Councilwoman Banks said, what, the pickle, what's it called?
Pickleball.
Pickleball. Could we just have two courts of pickleball on this end and then open it up for the basketball more? Or do you think there's more of a demand for pickleball than basketball?
Yeah, we, we have a pretty strong demand for those pickleball courts, and when we have four courts, we're able to do some, some tournament play and some real teaching. Uh, while some people are using it, we can teach with that. Um, I, I understand your concern, um, about the spacing, and, boy, nobody wants the, the, the play to go well and for us to have success, uh, as much as our Parks and Recreation Department and yourselves. So w- we, we want to be able to manage that space as well. Um, Chris was just talking, uh, about looking at that as we go forward and perhaps pulling that third court out a bit away from, um, that space. I know that there's a incline there on that side.
The west, yeah, the west edge falls away, but I think there is definitely room, if we eliminate the full-court function, to give a lot more breathing room to all three courts.
I'm sorry, what did you say? Was there a, a, a slinging ball? What, I, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
I apologize, uh, to the council. The, 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 um, page left on the outside of that fence
Yeah.
is a decline that falls off.
Okay.
Um, so by adding that crescent, we're picking up additional real estate within the, uh, court. And, uh, the, the second thing I had said that I think by eliminating the full-court function and pulling the north and south half courts further apart, um, that'll afford a lot of additional space. You can see the amount of space between the, the baseline and the fence, um, which isn't marked on this drawing, but will afford a lot more elbow room to all three courts if we eliminate the full-court function, which I believe would be more in line with the original intent of having three courts anyway, three half courts, excuse me.
So are you saying, example, on the lower court where it says number three basketball post, move that down to where the dot, 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 dots are?
Clo- closer, yep. It wouldn't be all the way to that line, because we would still want to maintain some distance between the court and the fence line. But do that to both the north and the south courts, which would give a lot more real estate to the center court, and we could maybe even move it, that center court to the right a little bit to give a little more space between the baseline and, and the, uh, the fence, which is the dotted line.
Move the center court to the right.
You said the center court to the right?
To give a little more room at the base, yep, so that you're not right up against the fence line as much. I believe there's about six feet there. I believe there's about six feet there, so if you wanted some more feet...
So, through the chair, um, I, I have had 25 years of Park and Rec experience before I started with Southfield, and again, I, I would encourage the council to consider trying this as a best practice with some modification. We're really talking about paint colors that will distinguish the half courts from each other, and it's, it's a lot easier to make, uh, modifications later in paint should there be an issue. But I, I do agree that if you just have the two courts function as one full-time, full court, that would probably cause more problems than these three half courts. And I, and as, as Mr. Riggert was stating, they, they can make some adjustments to expand and they can use color, uh, color coding to distinguish each of the three half courts from each other. But, um, again, I, I'm, I'm in favor of, of at least starting out with the, uh, with the three half court option.
Madam Chair?
Thank you. Councilwoman Brightwell? Yes?
The, it's simply because this is not the scale, it's, it's confusing, but when you said best practices and we're going to rely on your professional opinion, uh, and the, we want this thing to be successful, to be full use, but, uh, I'm on, I, I think in worst-case scenarios sometime, and I can see when it gets too crowded, you have people out there, you're going to have fights and conflicts if, you know, individuals are running. But with your best practices, you have seen other locations designed as this, with the dimensions that are required for basketball, it operates sufficiently, not, because right here, we look at this scale, I, I was, I know when things are not designed, drawn to scale. But, so you've seen other locations designed as this, you don't have the perceived conflict that we are thinking about now, overcrowding. So, it, it will work, is what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, yes, sir. Um, and we've seen some examples that are tighter than this and even a little bit more creative where they may even throw another use over top of this, like, um, like a handball court or something else that truly makes it a very flexible space with lots of different things happening. And granted, you can't be doing all of those things at the same time, which is the same case here, you can't be doing a full court game and have all three half courts used at the same time, but it does provide a high level of flexibility so that, um, youth or residents, anybody can, can find a way to, to play over here in a variety of different ways. So, yes, we've definitely seen flexible use courts like this that work.
Okay. And I did hear that one of the things that can happen is we can, that's why I'm talking about monitoring the initial rollout and getting the bugs out of it when you roll something out. So, we can always scale back, we can always cut back and change things and adjust to what is happening.
My apologies, sir. Um, I was going to say the middle court, um, should it end up not working, you can take the, take the backboard down and it's not in the way of, of the other courts. Um, so there's, there's definitely room to monitor over time and, and make it...
Okay. The, the main thing that you said was, you've seen this work before somewhere else. This, okay, all right.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier?
Yeah. How many, uh, parks are going to have basketball in it?
Uh, right now, Miller and Sims.
Pardon me?
Right now, Miller and Sims.
That's the only two in the city?
That's the only two in the city.
Reason I, and the reason I say that is, you know, other sports, uh, and I agree with, uh, Councilman Cruz, that I've heard of pickleball, but, uh, have never seen a pickleball game or anything else. But I know we had foot golf, I don't know if that was a flash in the pan or, or, or what, but basketball never seems to get out of style. And I know a few years ago, or several years ago, Gus Macker had tournaments, uh, three-on-three, and one of the things that we are charged with doing as a council and as an administration is try to make the city more attractive to younger people. And, uh, if we're going to put basketball courts in, half courts, uh, I think it's going to be very attractive. And we need to, we need to watch how much activity is going on. I know years ago, we used to have some down at, uh, John Grace, and there was a problem because people would come across Eight Mile Road and climb the fence when it was, the park was closed and cause the neighbors all kinds of things. So, it's always been attractive for young people trying to, uh, prove that they should have been picked to go to the NBA, but, uh, um, I think this is a start.
Absolutely.
But I think we also ought to be looking at other, other parks so that, uh, everyone's not, uh, getting up to play basketball here and at Sims Park, so...
Absolutely. And I, your point is well taken. Um, during the Beechwoods Master Plan, there was a request for basketball courts to be included, uh, in at least one of the phases, um, at Beechwood. So, um, that is in the master plan, is to add outdoor courts there, but, yeah, your point is well taken. We want to be able to not just have one or two courts in one or two parks. Uh, we've got 12 playgrounds, uh, in 12 of our parks. We like to spread it out geographically, um, and we'd be doing so, uh, with basketball as well as pickleball. Um, over at Sims, uh, the tennis court will be lined for pickleball as well, so, um, and, and again, it goes back to what we had talked about in an earlier time is intergenerational, so bringing different user groups to our parks, uh, both with that pathway and with pickleball, so...
Sure.
Sort of self-monitoring, if you will. And I can tell you that folks have been very verbal and very communicative in both those parks. Uh, we've got, we've got a lot of pros, uh, we did get a lot of suggestions, uh, over at Sims Park to build a shed and put the backboards in the shed, and then when they want it, go to the shed and do the combination lock. So, we try to explain that that wasn't real realistic. Uh, but people are thinking about how they can make it work in their neighborhoods. So, they know that there has been issues in the past, uh, they know that there's a need for basketball and that there's a need for our, our, our parks having other options other than just the playground. So, your point's well taken. We will, we'll look at improving that.
And if I could just add as well, um, one of the things that Ms. Fields, you know, that, that was thought through, I think, very intentionally at the beginning is to locate pickleball next to basketball. Uh, pickleball is a wildly popular, um, sport that's growing, um, at, at a breakneck pace across the country. Right now, it's primarily, um, uh, used by a population that's 65 or older. Um, but, but I think what you may find, at, at least initially, is that the pickleball courts may be busier than the basketball courts. Has a very, um, strong following of people who will play, and, um, and by having four courts next to each other, you'll get a contingent of folks who will take care of that pickleball court. Um, and, and I think the, the, the thought is that by having a group of, of older adults that are managing, you know, a, a part of the area, that that will translate into some eyes in the park, you know, making sure that there aren't conflicts or fights or things like that, um, or at least cause people to think twice before that kind of thing happens. So, by putting the pickleball next to the basketball, there's some intentions to self-monitoring within the park.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, thank you. Uh, did I hear you, uh, Ms. Fields, did I hear you say that you wanted to, you're hoping to, um, have courts in at least 12, 12 of our parks?
No, what I said was we've, like with some of our playgrounds, we have playgrounds in 12 different parks. Um, so, we want to be able to spread the wealth. Um, so, I was going along with what, uh, Councilman Frazier was talking about and not just having basketball in two out of our, our very many parks, but to look at the opportunity to expand that.
Okay. And, uh, you said this has been, having the, the three half courts is kind of a best practice. Are, is, do you have, like, examples, different places, different cities that have, uh, have courts? Is it possible for you to get us pictures of what it looks like? Because I know one of the things that is throwing us off is the scale, um, so I don't know of actually seeing pictures of what the court might help us a little bit better.
Um, I'll let you...
No, go ahead.
I was going to say, yes, we, we have some photos that we can, um, definitely make those available.
Okay. Uh, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, uh, well, we've discussed this for about 30 minutes, so I think we have all of our questions. Are we ready or prepared to vote, or do we want to see the resolution?
Our recommended, um, resolution for approval of the site plan. And what you could do is approve the overall concept plan and have the Parks and Rec Department come back at a, at a, at a later date with some additional information specifically on the basketball court, so that the site plan is, is approved at this time.
And the pictures, that'll give you time to get us pictures.
Madam Chair, I would like to move that we approve PSP 21-001, the site plan, with the recommendation that Parks and Rec will come back with us, to us with, with respect to the, uh, scaling of the basketball court.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Cruz, for the approval of PSP 21-0012, the site plan review for, uh, Miller Park. Would the recommended suggestions to the scaling and the pictures be presented to council as soon as possible? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay. And I'd like to clarify my nay vote, please.
Yes, please.
Um, I'm in favor of the proposal with two courts at the present time, not three. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Then our final site plan is a similar, um, proposal for improvements, PSP 21-0011 to Sims Park, located on the south side of Webster between Rambling and Southfield Road. Again, this is a site plan review request for alterations to Sims Park, including a new pickleball, basketball courts, and asphalt path around the site. Uh, this is the existing conditions at the neighborhood park. Uh, this is the proposed demolition plan. And then, again, uh, the tenants of this is to create a circular walking path trail to convert the existing tennis courts to pickleball as well as three half basketball courts. And, um, because this is a neighborhood park without any off-street parking, we made a recommendation at the planning commission level to have an ADA accessible drop-off and pickup point, but we feel that, uh, a number of the neighbors will be able to walk to this facility, but just in case there's a senior or somebody with a disability to provide an accessible drop-off and pickup area. Uh, these are some details of, of some improvements to the entrances to the park. And then with that, Ms. Fields and, and Chris, if you have anything you'd like to add?
Um, I would say for, I think, just a major part of this is the existing court that's there right now is a pi, um, in Sims Park. It's a tennis court, and it's kind of on a berm, um, and so the sightlines into the park are difficult for folks that are just driving past, like our police department. So, what we're doing is taking that, uh, landscape down, lower, and moving that court away from the street. Um, and that will be a tennis court, and it will also be lined for basketball, or, I'm sorry, it will also be lined for pickleball. Uh, and then we will have the same setup of the three basketball courts with that teardrop on the outside. Um, Terry talked about the walking path, it's about a quarter of a mile all the way around. Um, we did get some, uh, calls, again, about making sure that we were not reserving the gazebo area. Um, they wanted to make sure that we had a park presence as well as a police presence. Makes it easy for me to be able to tell the truth, and that is, our police department is always at our stakeholders' meetings, uh, they've been at our master plan meetings, they've given great suggestions on keeping our sightlines clear, um, making sure that we have, uh, good signage, way, wayfinding signage in the parks. This is the other park that will be, uh, launching our, uh, new logo and new, new park signage, so it's more welcoming, uh, for folks. I know that the mayor had talked about parking, no parking signs. Um, there are no signs posted along Pierce, uh, there are no signs posted along Wilshire, but there are signs posted along Glasgow, um, on the south side of the street, and it does say, as you had inferred, eight to five Monday through Friday. Um, that's the only street that has a no parking on it. Um, so I know that there was some concern. Terry had alluded to, uh, us being able to provide a drop-off area for folks that, uh, needed a closer access, uh, to the area. So, uh, we're looking forward to, to bringing, uh, some healthy activity to that park as well. Uh, we did, as Terry said, we, we had some phone calls, uh, in regards to, um, a drop-off area. Um, good communication was requested, um, liked the idea of the intergenerational users, because right now, we just have kids playing on the playground. Uh, being able to provide that walking path there, uh, was, was very, uh, popular with folks in that area. Um, and again, whenever we bring investment and, um, improvement to parks, it allows us to be able to provide programming. And so, you know that we have a pretty strong outreach program called Recreation on the Move, where we take our programs out to the parks. We don't always expect kids to be able to get a ride into our facilities, uh, so in the summertime, uh, we, uh, definitely have a strong outreach program. So, this will be able to, uh, provide us, uh, the ability to provide some, uh, basketball clinics, it'll provide some, uh, tennis, uh, and certainly, uh, some wellness, uh, health and wellness programs on the walking path. So, uh, we're looking forward to moving forward with this pro, with this, uh, project as well.
Okay, thank you. Council, do we have any questions? Councilwoman Banks?
Is the scale of the basketball courts for Sims Park the same as the Miller Park? Okay, so I, I just noticed on here, you know, it's just something to think about for the future. Usually with our site plans, there's always footage between distances and, um, there isn't on this particular plan, but I just noticed it said one, one inch equals 10 feet, so this is not one inch. So, this is probably, um, five feet apart, the lines?
Which, uh, which lines, ma'am, are you referring to?
Again, I'm just, I'm, I'm just still have concerns about the basketball, I'm sorry.
Not, not a problem.
And there's, this, where the circles are around each of the courts, it says on here, um, scale, one inch equals 10 feet. So, this is not a one-inch scale, it's, or is it a half-inch scale? I don't know what the scale is.
Uh, well, the image up here isn't to really any, any scale, given that it's, uh, enlarged from, from the paper copy, but I think if your, if your comments in regards to the concern for the basketball, it's the same layout, and I think we would take the same level of, uh, attention to, to making sure council is comfortable with that layout. So, it would receive probably the same treatment as what we discussed on Miller Park.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Frazier?
Yeah. What's the surface of the walking path?
Asphalt.
Asphalt?
Yes, sir.
So, it is ADA?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
It would be less than 5% running slope and less than 2% cross-slope throughout the whole, so it would be ADA accessible.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Um, Mayor Seiver?
I can't recall, did you say there would be anything, uh, or any provision for porta-potties at these parks?
Um, not at Sims Park. Um, at Miller Park, we, um, really had a strong request for that, uh, for the usage there. We've got, we had a lot of, um, ball, baseball playing, um, but we, we don't put one at Sims Park to this, to this point.
The only other comment, uh, I'm certainly supportive of this and the walking trails, more and more people are walking. But at, just as the questions earlier regarding, um, uh, the new, um, bar that, uh, was approved this evening, it's all in management, how, how, uh, these are supervised. So, uh, again, I expressed my concern, uh, for the resident... So again, I express my concern for the residents around these parks, that I believe this is all doable, and it's really about how they're managed and how we control the activities so that they're an enhancement to the neighborhood and not a detract from the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have your recommendation?
Yes, Madam Chair. Our recommendation is shown above, and we will add the additional comment regarding coming back to council with some further details on the scale and examples of the basketball court, but we are recommending favorable approval tonight.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion that we approve PSP twenty-one dash zero zero one-one with the city planners' recommendations, as well as the recommendation that it comes back to us prior with more information about the basketball courts.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Brightwell, for the approval of PSP twenty-one dash zero zero one-one for the site plan review for the City of Southfield Parks and Rec renovations to Sims Park, as presented with the recommended additional recommendations. Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No. And point of privilege for my no vote, please.
Yes.
I agree with the basketball courts, but I'm more comfortable with two versus three at the present time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Terry.
Through the chair, this concludes our public hearings and site plans. And with your permission, I do have item A under agenda items for discussion and/or action.
Yes.
This next item is authorization to award signed graphics for the replacement of the damaged three-sided kiosk. The photo really is worth a thousand words here. Back in January fourth of 2021, unfortunately, there was a high-speed chase, and erratic driver plowed through the kiosk, continued across the front lawn, damaging bench and landscaping, taking out a tree, and came to rest about halfway through the south municipal parking lot. Unfortunately, it's taken about a year to recover the insurance proceeds, coordinate replacement and bidding. But we do now have received two qualified low bidders. We are recommending approval to the low-qualified bidder, signed graphics, to replace the three-sided kiosk. There is enough proceeds from the insurance to cover the cost of the kiosk. The Southfield City Center will be partnering to replace the maps that were lost. One is the city center district map. The second was the municipal campus map. And the third side was a bulletin board that we use to display special events. City Center has already provided a replacement for the damaged bench. So with your permission, I'm asking council to authorize awarding the contract to signed graphics on behalf to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Counsel, do we have any questions? Councilman Brightwell?
I understand MMR awarded us X amount of dollars. Given that this was caused by an automobile, will the city and/or MMR be reimbursed for the full replacement cost of this some kind of way? Or is that just the way the insurance work? They want to pay us what they want to pay us?
Typically, the way it works is that the driver was identified, and our group will work with MMR to recover the loss from our end. But there was a $2,500 deduction with the claim. So we are hopeful that we'll be able to recover all or most of this from the insurance driver. But we do, we did receive a check back in February of last year, which was deposited in April. I've been anxiously trying to get this replaced. There's still going to be a six-to-eight week leg time, once the award has been given, for the fabrication and installation. And we're looking at probably spring of this year before it gets installed, which is almost fifteen months since it happened. So concurrently, again, we do have enough funds to pay for the installation, and Mr. Zorn and myself can follow up with Mr. Garnett Carr regarding where we are as far as recovering the funds from the vehicle driver.
Right, excellent. Terry, this is just hypothetical. Does this location and/or the probability of this happening again call for, and this is extra calls, putting stakes in the ground, cement stakes in the ground, kind of surrounding this?
Certainly, we could look at bollards, but this was so unusual. The motorist who was evading a police chase was actually driving on the wrong side of the road at a high rate of speed. It's unfortunate it happened once. I don't think that bollards would have stopped this car, because this car traveled through the three-sided kiosk that was bolted to the ground, through a bolted bench, through several landscaping, across the whole front lawn, through another tree, jumped several curbs, and ended up in the parking lot, almost in line with our public services building. So again, we could put the bollards in, but in this odd case, I don't think they would have had much of a result in stopping this car.
Okay, no, I'm just looking for the next incident.
You know, and I said to Mr. Zorn, it took us years to get it installed. It was put in as part of our Evergreen Road, and it's very frustrating then, in an instant, it can now be taken away, and it's over a year to fifteen months to just get it replaced. So I certainly don't want to have to go through this again. And we will look at the bollards. That's an additional cost and expense, but in this particular case, I don't think it would have made a difference.
Okay, no, I'm looking for the future. Okay, all right, well, thank you, because you will inform us if you, what you call them, foulers? They're called foulers, to foul the next incident, to keep the next incident from being as damaging as this one.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you?
No, I said, I think Terry mentioned that they will take a look at putting those stakes, cement stakes.
The bollards, the bollards.
Foul, and.
We'll look at it.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hear none, action, counsel?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the contract with signed graphics to replace the three-sided kiosk in the amount of $32,410.
Support. It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilwoman Banks, for the approval to authorize the award to signed graphics for the replacement of the damaged three-sided kiosk. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
All right. Our next item is the authorization to replace backup server equipment in Technology Services Department.
Thank you, Madam President. Renee Henehose, our Director of IT, will be addressing this item.
Yes, thank you.
Good evening, Madam President. Counsel, we're looking to replace our backup server equipment. The total price on that is going to be about $65,673.06. And it's to replace two of our older backup servers. They're now approaching seven years old, which is well beyond what we normally keep our equipment at, updated. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them for you.
Thank you. Counsel, do we have any questions? Councilman Mandelbaum?
Because these are much newer, I'm assuming that they're smaller and use less electricity?
They're all about the same power-wise, but they're just more efficient. So yes, in a way, it will use less electricity, but it is going to be, because it's, they're going to be faster. That's, so that's less time we're going to be using them.
Are they smaller?
It's the same form factor. It's two U rack servers that go in our rack. So they're about, you know, about eight inches high and twenty-seven inches deep, or something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? Are we prepared to vote?
Madam President? Okay, the council does hereby authorize a purchase of hardware, software, and professional services for the upgrade of the Technology Services Backup Server from Dell Corporation.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, for the approval authorization to replace the backup server equipment, as mentioned. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, counsel.
Our next item is the authorization for Motorpool Division to purchase auto parts from AWI Holdings Company.
Thank you, Madam President. Deputy Administrator John McReena will be addressing this on behalf of Public Works this evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
Although Motorpool contracts out most of our bodywork, they actually do the mechanical work themselves. Motorpool. Better? All right, thank you. Motorpool and Purchasing have been working together to get parts suppliers under contract to comply with our purchasing requirements and to speed the process. Tonight, we're recommending two of these companies. Glendale Auto Supply of Farmington Hills and A1 Truck Parts of Pontiac. We're recommending authorizing up to $25,000 in purchasing from Glendale and $20,000 from A1. Both these companies are owned by AWI Holdings. Part of the reason why we'd like to see these companies approved is they have a better grade of parts, and very importantly, they get the parts we need to us on time, and they are the right parts. So we're not pulling parts off and then stopping because we didn't get the right parts. We are scheduled to recommend at least one other firm, I think it's the next meeting. And just to let you know, there are still some parts that we always buy OEM. For instance, patrol car parts are always OEM. And dump truck parts, at least for the upfitting parts, have to be OEM because we can't find them anywhere else.
Okay. Counsel, do we have any questions from Mr. McReena? Councilwoman Banks?
Is there a Glendale Auto Parts in Southfield?
I don't know if they have a store there. I don't know. I know where their headquarters.
Okay, so this is the headquarters. Because I was going to say, why aren't we dealing with the Southfield location versus Farmington Hills?
Well, as I say, they've had a lot of positive results with this firm, and they are delivered, so we're not sending someone to get them. I understand there's a preference for city parts, and I can check to see if they have a store in our city.
Yeah, because it says there's a Glendale Auto Supply. I think it's on Telegraph Road in Ten Mile, but I thought that's where it was, but maybe it's not there anymore. Okay, thank you.
Offhand, it's not where I shop, so.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, are we prepared to vote?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve item C authorization for Motorpool Division to purchase auto parts from AWI Holding Companies.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, for the approval authorization for the Motorpool Division to purchase auto parts from AWI Holdings Company. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is the amend resolution number 2021 dot 331, price increased for signed applicator and long-reach cutter. I believe that's you too, John?
Yes, thank you, ma'am. As you recall, on December thirteenth, you approved the purchase of a roll-away signed applicator from Wensco Sign, $12,582. Unfortunately, subsequent to that approval, there was a price hike. Two things. First of all, the cost of the signed applicator itself was increased by about $1,000, and shipping was removed from the purchase price. The sign comes from Sweden, so there's $1,800 in shipping. Unfortunately, that makes the total $2,767 more, moving it from $12,582 to $15,349. That's a 4.55% price increase. DPW has reviewed this, and although the price increase is unfortunate, they are still convinced that this is the most economical way to give the sign shop these capabilities, and they're requesting that council approve amending the original resolution.
Okay. Any questions, counsel, regarding this signed applicator? Councilman Frazier?
Yeah, is this something that's going to get caught up in the supply chain that there, everybody is talking about, why it takes so long to get stuff?
And see a price drop as a result? I'm not sure.
Okay.
On this instance, I would be guessing.
Yeah, I was okay with it until you said it came from Sweden.
I understand their shipping time, but there was no indication that this is a temporary increase, and if we wait, we would save money. No, there was not.
Is it something that is going to prevent us from getting our job done if it doesn't get here in a reasonable amount of time?
It will prevent us from making signs as large as we want and of the quality that we like to see. We can muddle through with the old equipment. It's worn, and some of it is actually equipment we received at no charge from another city that got rid of it, and it's just beyond its life.
Okay.
So we may have to purchase some signs, and custom signs would just be unrealistic then.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. See, no other, counsel? Are we prepared to make a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we amend our, I'm sorry, that we amend our original resolution number 2021 dot 331 to include the price increase of $2,767.07 for a revised expenditure of $15,349.86.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Cruz, for the approval to amend the resolution number 2021 dot 331 as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearings, thank you. Our next item is the authorization to extend water and sewer infrastructure relining and maintenance services.
Thank you, Council President. Unfortunately, we are going to request this item be pulled. In conducting the last final review, there was one little point that needs to be clarified, and I don't want to present it until it's totally correct and accurate.
Thank you. So pulled toward date uncertain?
Hopefully, the next meeting, but.
No pressure.
Madam Chair, is this item E, what we were talking about?
Item E.
Yeah. I know you're going to bring it back, John, but in reading through this, I don't know what this is for clarification, but we had a price of approximately five million. And so I'm not sure I ever want to approve a contract that says approximately.
I understand that concern, yes.
Can we get something that gives a range here? It'll be 4,999 or 5.222 or something?
Absolutely, I understand, sir. And this contract is actually a per-unit price.
Excuse me?
It's a per-unit price. So it's not to purchase a certain amount. It's so much per foot, we expect to spend up to that amount.
Okay.
So I will clarify that when the letter's rewritten.
Sure. Okay, because of. Sure. Okay, because approving a contract of approximately, that opens up so many doors.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And the last item, amend Resolution Number 2022.12, which is the price increase for the DPW dump trucks.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. As you know, on the 10th of this month, or this month, you did approve purchase of two DPW dump trucks and upfitting them into dump trucks, chassis and dump trucks. Unfortunately, subsequent to that decision, Daimler Truck of North America imposed an across-the-board price hike of $2,900 on both trucks, or each truck. So $5,800 total. The price is unilateral. We can back out of the purchase, but there's no other way to avoid the price increase. We've already learned that, for instance, the 2024s will cost more. So in this instance, there's absolutely no savings in waiting to see if it goes down. It's going up instead, and we know that. So, this is about a 1.35% increase in the overall cost of the trucks and upfitting, and we still believe it is the best way to go, and we're asking Counsel to amend the original resolution.
Councilman Mandelbaum?
John, thank you. You know, this is the second one. We're talking tonight about a price increase after we've approved it. Would it make, and I'm sure that this is not going to be the last time, based on how things are going, my question is, would it make sense, similar to how we bid out other projects, to add a contingency to be used, and it could even be a small, like, you know, 5%, because this is only one, the other one was, I think, like 4. something? But would it make sense to add in a small contingency for efficiency purposes? And because, who knows, you know, maybe they could have upped the premium by tomorrow when we tell them, "Go ahead."
Sir, that's an excellent idea, although it's sort of a philosophical idea. When we have a general, a price increase due to additional work, that's one thing. But if we just have a price increase to the same thing I already told you was going to cost you $100, if you're comfortable with me paying $105, that's great, but I believe that is a decision that Counsel should make.
Because the other question I have is, because these are also under $10,000 in increases, couldn't that just have been administratively approved?
We put that question to our finance department, and because it's part of the total price, they felt it needed to come back as an amendment. We like the idea of the 5% contingency. Two of these are transportation-related. If you've been following a lot of the supply chain issues, it's what's happening in our seaports, our train stations. That's, you know, they're paying for additional freight for materials to sit because they're not getting to their final destination.
Okay, just an idea. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Counsel, are you ready to vote?
Madam Chair? Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to move approval of the Amendment Resolution Number 2022.12, Price Increase for DPW Dump Trucks.
Support?
It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Brightwell, for the approval of the amended Resolution 2022.12, price increase as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We have no ordinances. We come to our communications. And the City of Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language toward any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If the person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed to be, by the presiding officer, to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the City of Southfield City Council, and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. We have one person requesting communications tonight, Mr. Fred Spencer. Okay, so seeing he's not here. Counsel, we'll go to the Counsel portion. And we'll start with you, Councilwoman Banks.
Thank you. Today, the governor announced that the State of Michigan will be offering 250,000 free COVID tests. This is in addition to the COVID tests that the federal government offered, and I hope everyone signed up to receive their tests. I know our family received ours two days ago. If you're interested in receiving an additional test, you can go to Project ACT at the State of Michigan website. Each kit will contain five tests. There's also a telephone number, if it's easier for you to call, and the telephone number is 1-888-535-6136. If you have not had an opportunity to get your COVID test from the federal government, you can go to USPS.com and order it. It's very easy. All they ask is for your name, address, I believe, an email address, and that's it. One kit is allowed per household. The governor indicated when the 250,000 kits in Michigan are gone, they're gone. Also, to our city administrator, is there a way that Counsel can receive, whenever convenient, an update report on what's happening that's at the Sapphire Apartment Complex? I'm still receiving calls, and if we could have a little more detailed update, I would appreciate it. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Thank you. I have a couple veteran items that I will announce. Starting January 29th through April 16th, the Accounting Aid Society will be preparing tax returns for all veterans. It will be at the... It would, I'm sorry, it'll be in Pontiac, at 196 Caesar Chavez Avenue in Pontiac. From April, from January 29th through April 26th, they have individual family, there's an income requirement there, which is anyone less than $57,000 annually, they will prepare your taxes for free. To register and to schedule your time, please dial 313-556-1920. That's 556-1920. And/or you can go online to the AccountingAidSociety.org. And if you can obviously call me here at the City Hall, and I can relay that info to you if it was not, if you didn't get it all. One other item, the Veterans, Oakland County Veteran Society will be having a Veterans Resource Fair on February 24th in Clarkston. And it's be located at 4819 Mary Sue Street in Clarkston. Also, to, if you need additional information, please contact at the county, Oakland County, Mr. Tyrone Jordan at 248-285-8016. And at that resource fair, they will be giving away food. You will be able to get your DD 214 printed, and numerous other items related to veterans. But please contact Mr. Jordan at 248-285-8016. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Yes, I just wanted to just remind everyone that tomorrow is Black History Month, the beginning of Black History Month. And I just encourage everyone to take a moment throughout this month to learn something new about, in Black History that you maybe didn't know already. So I just want to make sure we acknowledge that, and I think throughout the month, I'll probably be bringing some history myself to share with folks. But other than that, I have nothing else, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier?
I have nothing to add. I agree with Councilman Cruz that every time you open up a book that you hear about that African-American has written, it makes you feel proud of all the things that our people have done to make this country what it is today. So, and not getting any credit for it. So, one of them is, I don't know if you are familiar with the 1619 Project? But that's a podcast that can really open your eyes. Worth spending the time listening to it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Totally agree. Totally agree.
Councilman Hoskins?
Thank you. I'll just echo what Councilwoman Banks said about making sure you sign up to get the 250,000 free COVID tests that the state announced today. I would also remind residents or anyone that we also do testing here on Mondays and Thursdays through Oakland County. They do it in the Southfield Pavilion Parking Deck. You can go to Oakland County's website and sign up there for an appointment. You can do drive-up as well without an appointment. Or you can call, if calling is easier, the number is 1-800-848-5533. But that is all I have this evening.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Yes, thank you. As it relates to what Councilwoman Banks and Councilman Hoskins says, also, the post office, you can get free masks from them, and you can do that directly from the post office, and they'll mail them, they'll eventually get to your home. But you just go to the USPS website and sign up, and you can get four free masks delivered to your home. As a follow-up to Councilman Cruz and Councilman Frazier, the city here will have a number of events for Black History Month, and they're having a huge kickoff event this Saturday. Here in the pavilion, it's free admission. It's for ages 12 and up, from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. So it's going to be a great event. There's a lot of different information tables and different things for everyone to do. So that's the kickoff event, but our Parks and Rec Department will be hosting throughout the entire month of February different events. You can go to the city's website, go to their Facebook page for us, also for Parks and Rec. There's more information there. Also, something that I use frequently, I almost had to use it tonight until our deputy city administrator says he was going to do it for me, was the Southfield has the Southfield Solutions app that also has geolocating on your, where you are. So I have it installed on my phone, and when people call me for issues or questions, you know, animals in the street, or garbage issues, or street signs fell down, you can go onto this app, you can plug in the information, geolocate it directly to an address, add in pictures if you'd like, and it gets sent directly to the city and routed to the appropriate area. And it gets, they add their own notes, and you can see where things are in progress as things are going. Even potholes can be reported with pictures and geolocating. So when you call in that pothole and you say, "I'm not really sure where it was," you can actually pinpoint it, and our Public Works Department will be able to get right to that spot. Speaking of Public Works, as I'm sure everyone has heard on the weather today, they're talking about a major snowstorm later this week. So just please be mindful that it does take, the city has over 200 miles of road to plow and clean. So please be patient. The city will do its best to get everything cleared as quickly as possible. My last comment is a question for the city administrator. I was approached today by a resident in Section 25 who walked to work along Ten Mile between Greenfield and Southfield Road, and he wanted to know the possibility of adding lights along that corridor. I reached out to the county. Streetlights. I'm sorry? Oh. Okay, well, I reached out to the county, and they said it was a city issue. I just didn't know what we could do as a city, but I guess I'll wait for our next meeting. All right, that was all. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, thank you for all the comments. I have nothing to add to those, and I agree with everything that's already been said, reminding us of Black History Month and the upcoming snowstorm and to protect ourselves. But I did want to ask this Counsel if, for the month of February, we listened to some of the residents that has come before us asking for our communication section to be heard first. They're saying that they were concerned that they sit through our meetings and they would prefer to at least try to speak to us in advance and then go about their evening. So I'm asking for the month of February, if we could try, just to see for those three meetings, how it goes, if we move communications to the first item right after the Pledge of Allegiance. Just try it. Let's see what our residents, if they can come in and speak to us first, and then we can go ahead with our order of business. If this would be agreeable with Counsel for the month of February, for us to try it and see what it's like.
I think it would be worthwhile to try.
Thank you. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would that be fine for you to change our schedule around just a little bit?
Yeah, Counsel acts by resolution, so we would need a motion on the floor that for the month of February, Counsel will rearrange the agenda so that public comment would be after the Pledge of Allegiance, and we would need a proper move and support for that.
Okay. Counsel, may I have a...
Yep, Madam Chair, I'd like to make, I'd like to move that for the month of February, we have public comment or communication after the Pledge of Allegiance.
Support? Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilwoman Banks, for us, for the month of February, to move communications after the Pledge of Allegiance. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to also state a time certain that we will reevaluate this proposal and this resolution because I want to, as a citizen, I sat through back when we had that, and it was a situation. That's why they went to where it is now, because it was abused. So I would like to make sure we have a certain time to reevaluate this at the beginning of March.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Kind of information?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Wasn't it just for February, and then in March, it was going back to our regular proceedings?
Sure.
That was the resolution. I just want to make sure we're clear. That was the resolution that was passed.
That was the resolution. We're trying it for the month of February.
Okay.
The three meetings in February to see how it works out.
All right, and...
Then we'll revisit it. If we like it, if it works, then we'll make another resolution at the first, at the last meeting in February to continue, or we... after, at the first, at the last meeting in February, to continue, or we don't have to-
Okay.
Right, if it's a permanent, if it's a permanent fixing, then the proper protocol would be that council would need to adjust their rules and procedures. Since this is something on a temporary basis, the motion on the floor is presentable, but if council decides in March that this is something that we are going, that they will like to do permanently, then we would have to make an amendment or a correction to the current rules and procedures that were adopted by this council.
Okay, all right, whatever, whatever needs to be done.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Yeah, I was, I just wanted to say, and actually, Councilman Brightwell kind of just cleared it back up for me, and maybe I just missed the, missed part of that. I didn't want us to get started on this route, and then, and it stayed that way. I don't have a problem with trying it for the month, I guess, but I know we already voted, but nonetheless, I don't want folks to think that I'm not open to trying it out, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Cruz, Frazier?
You know, I've been around here longer than anybody else, and I voted for, I voted for the resolution, because I didn't want to say, "Yeah, we tried that once, and it didn't work." You know, that's all, you know, you hate to hear people say that. I'm willing to try it again and see if it does work, but I'm glad that we put some brakes on it, so that, because the next thing that's going to happen is, oh, three minutes is not long enough, now we want to go to five minutes. And we're here to do the city business. And even though the communications is part of our overall requirements, the majority of the thing is to make sure the city is running properly. And by having the people come up right after the beginning, it prevents them from saying anything about anything else that's on the agenda. So, it's over with by that time, so, but I'm willing to let it go, try out, try again.
Thank you, counsel, for us trying it for the month of February, it's just for the month of February. Thank you. Mayor Seiber?
Yes, to Mr. Frazier, the opposite could be argued, that before a vote was taken, a resident didn't get to speak on something on the agenda. But anyhow, be that as it may, I was going to mention the weather prediction, I don't want to cause undue alarm, but should we get the storm that's in the forecast, we'd ask residents to please keep their cars off the street, as it helps our Public Works crew do their job, to make the streets clearer and safer for everyone. And I do want to announce that we have a display coming for the lobby that will be up for the next six months, it's a Black History Month exhibit, but it's more than that, it's an artist who's done tremendous work, and we will, date to be determined, we will have a reception to meet the artist, and obviously viewing his work. That's all I have this evening, thank you.
Thank you. City Administrator?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to just comment on the Sapphire, I will request that the Building Department prepare a more formal document for council. I want to let council know that the Building Department staff has been responding on a daily basis to eight to 10 calls, emails, daily. It has become quite challenging, as of last Friday, the building did have heat, a temporary source was brought in, as well as hot water. Please note, we're told, as recently as today, periodically, the company, in order to make repairs, sometimes has to turn the water off. As I understand, the situation is the boilers have been operating, but what is happening is the distribution system, the pipes, both the vertical rise and the horizontal rises continue to have experience. The property has, the property owner group has been cited. As each of these calls come in, I'm copied on these emails frequently throughout the day, emails are sent right to the management company, and they're letting them know. We cannot say this enough, residents residing in the building need to let the property management group know. Again, they need to let the property management group know. We are told frequently that no one is calling, they're calling the city instead of the property owner. The city is not dispatching a company to make the repairs, that is the function of the building owner. The other item is, we do have them under citation pertaining to their parking structure, and I'll ask the Building Department to provide council with an update on that matter as well. In addition, I will ask Community Relations to plug the free COVID test information, if it is not already on the city's website. Also, I'd encourage you to look at the city's website regarding Black History Month for both Parks and Rec and the library's programming activities. It is a very robust schedule of events, and I think there's something for everyone, and people of all ages and groups and all ethnicities. That concludes my remarks this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Attorney?
Yes, good evening, counsel, I have nothing further to add today, just want everyone to be safe this week.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Good evening, everyone. The Oakland County Commissioners are currently seeking nominations for their inaugural 2022 Outstanding African-American Award in honor of Black History Month. They are asking for nominations for Oakland County resident with outstanding record who has took in strides to improve the community that is worth recognition. The deadline for this submission is February 4th. The website you can go to is www.bit.ly/BocaFAMAW, or you can email the resume to boc@oakgov.com. I encourage everyone to at least try to nominate a Southfield resident, to see if we can get one of our residents to get this honor. All right, thank you, no other comments this evening.
Thank you. I don't see the treasurer, the planner is gone, city assessor, engineer, nothing to schedule. Counsel, is there anything else for the order of the business today? Seeing none, I now declare this meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.